Pretty lengthy meeting in front of us, so thanks everyone for coming prepared and attending tonight. I will start the meeting with a roll call and ask Bessie Jo to do that for us and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance together.
Mayor Giles.
Here.
Councilmember Nielsen is absent. I'm sorry, I cannot speak today. Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Machesek.
Present.
Councilmember Thrower, here.
Thank you, Bessie Jo. All right, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. I want for a motion to approve the consent agenda unless there are any changes that you would like to make to the consent agenda to remove items.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the published consent agenda. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machesek.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Giles.
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower.
Yes.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. We'll next move into our general public comment time. Bessie Jo, when I met with you this afternoon, we had two written comments received on time and they have been distributed to council.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Oh, who would you sign up for the public hearing on the food truck amendments? It means public comment.
All right, so the two written comments will be part of our official record for this meeting and they have been captured and reviewed by council.
We have two people sign up, but she accidentally signed up for this, but she meant to sign for this one. So they're both general comments.
Okay, thank you, Bessie Jo. And then before I move into that, was there anyone that wanted to talk to us on Teams or on telephone tonight?
No, nobody signed up.
Okay. We're going to start with Lynn Lewinsky and then Belinda, you'll have an opportunity to speak. And our tradition here that seems to work pretty well, keep our meetings on schedule, our three minutes focused presentation.
I'm hoping it's less than that. Lynn Lewinsky, McCall, Idaho. I wrote a note today and it's got some very direct questions. My question, I continually come, this is yet another layer of the continuing story. When will we have a public forum with people able to come and roundtable a note-action discussion about the short-term rentals? Just to set something up somewhere so that people can learn from you what you're going through as you're gathering information. We've had several close to the public meetings about what you're going through as you're rewriting ordinances and what there may be possibilities of doing or not doing. And I think that the newspapers don't always cover the information that you need to gather. I know from being here, many people don't just come, but I think as an open forum, it would be healthy. You know, it's like having your family get together at the table and somebody wants to use the car and there's a conflict. Bring it out to the table and have people come and visit. And maybe there are outside-of-the-box solutions or avenues that we haven't been able to think of ourselves. So that's my main request. And then in the letter, you know, I had some other questions about whether you've considered that LLC fund markets are actually investing and it's not a personal residence anymore, it's a company. To me, that's completely different than the law that the state had written originally. How can we empower the fire inspections? How can we empower some of these licensing that have been in discussion? But the talk ends up being cheap if you can't empower it. You know, if the fire chief doesn't have any more rights than I do to knock on the door and say, "Are you legal?" Then that isn't a standing ordinance that can be used in reference to. That's pretty much where I'm at with that and I just kind of like to keep adding to my booklet of questions and concerns. Again, my neighbors would like to know, would you consider the petition that we put out about just stopping the procedure of applying for licensing until we really get it all sorted? So, there you go. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. And your address is 713 Broken Ram here in McCall.
Or the library, yes, the eggs.
Okay, Belinda, you're next up and if you could just state your address for the record.
Sure.
Name and address. Thank you, Belinda.
Belinda Probanter, 13181 Highway 55, Donley, 8361 path. Mayor and council, I'm here to provide some insight on the independent economic studies that have been done for the Stibnike Gold Project. I asked a net to include in your packet today just a quick report, summary report on the three different reports that have been completed. And while I won't have time to go into any of those details, will more than happily answer any questions for you. The independent contractors that performed the economic analysis on our project have professional and ethical standards that they must follow, the same as a doctor, your accountant, or you guys as city council members. The companies looked at the risks and the benefits of our project. Perpetua funded the studies, however, that doesn't take away from the validity of the results. Early on in the project, University of Idaho's research economist Stephen Peterson used an in-plan model to prepare our feasibility study. Highlands Economic National Economic Firm did another study in 2018. And then the U.S. Forest Service, of course, reviewed 35 local studies and reports, including documents from municipalities, tribes, Department of Labor, Department of Education, the U.S. Census and more, before issuing the draft environmental impact statement. I know there's concerns about our project and how it's going to impact the recreation industry. Non-motorized and motorized recreation has a huge impact in our region. One of our larger recreational groups is the snowmobile group, which brings millions of dollars of revenue to Valley County and the city of McCall. I'm proud to say that Perpetua has earned the support of the Idaho snowmobiling clubs because we have worked very closely with them for alternative access into the back country and to make sure that we keep access to all. In my mind, pushing for a new study just because you don't like the results of the studies that have been done is a waste of taxpayers' money and businesses' money and in my mind shouldn't morally be the right thing to do. Economists have already evaluated the impacts of the project from every angle. We've taken the information to determine how we can work with local communities to help mitigate any potential impacts from our project. For example, we've already started conversations with all of the local schools on how we might provide gap funding if they have an influx of students coming into the area. This dialogue has been happening for years. So it's one example of the work that we've been doing. Can I finish or should I stop?
So that means you have about 30 seconds.
You got it.
Thank you, Belinda.
Some of the claims that I've heard the individuals pushing for is a new survey with the notion that we will contribute very little to the local economy or claim that we're a foreign entity, which is completely untrue. We've now moved our corporate offices to Boise. We genuinely want to work collaboratively within our communities. We would much prefer to sit down at a table, have dialogue, not unlike what she was mentioning. Let's talk about what your impacts are or become. We will prepare an impact statement in the coming months to provide to all municipalities. So let's sit down at a table, talk about what the fears are and figure out how we might mitigate them.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, we appreciate it.
And the document that Belinda is referring to came through this afternoon as part of the public comment items?
All right. Thanks for helping me with public comment, keeping me on the straight and narrow on that. I think we got through all of the stuff that we've received.
We are having some technical difficulties on our YouTube site. They're not having any audio, but we are streaming with the subtitles on and we'll replace it with the audio version tomorrow, but we are working to try to get that audio up, so just so you're all aware.
All right, so next up is a presentation. Agenda Bill 22-144, Idaho Headwaters Economic Study Presentation. Do we see, let's see, Chris, I believe is going to help us with that. Chris, this is Mayor Bob.
Hi.
I see you and Megan there. So we have received, in our packet, I'll call it a PowerPoint presentation and we've reviewed that. If you have new material that you want to share with us, I think there's a way to, our technical people can help you with capturing the screen and showing us whatever you'd like to show us during your time.
Yeah. We have made some changes to our presentation, so it's subtle, but it's a little bit different than what you have in front of you.
Well, welcome and thanks for joining us tonight, both of you.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks, Mayor Bob. And so how can we screen share on Teams? We're not super familiar with Teams.
If you see in the upper right corner next to the red leave button, there's a square with an arrow in it. And then, yeah, so you have to click on that and then select the document you want to share. It should pop up in the window underneath when you click on that box.
Yeah, that might be it. Click on it, it'll open. We're going to try it and see if it works.
Anything happening? Jo, are we not working with the, like, what we have in our packet?
No, they have a little different PowerPoint.
Okay.
So when you click on share, what do you see?
It's popping, it's a separate window than the way you described. I think he's on a Mac and it's, we're doing it on the desktop, we don't have the Teams app and so it looks a little bit different, but...
Yeah, I don't know how to operate a Mac, sorry.
Sorry, you guys.
Yeah, I know that it's different with a Mac because it's not Microsoft, so...
I mean, can we work off of this? How different is, how different is it what you guys have to present than what we already have?
Let me propose that you, so that we can...
I think I have it, I can show it.
We'll have someone put up your original on our screens and hopefully you'll be able to see it. And then anything that you want to tell us on each page of your presentation.
I think he's getting to share it. I think it might be working here in just a second. Oh, maybe it's window. All right, we, there's a lot, so Chris and I had, that slideshow was sent before we planned our presentation and we have actually like made some pretty big alterations to it.
Can they email it to you, Bessie Jo?
Yeah, they did. I was trying to get that in there. I have it, I can, I'm just trying to work on the other thing, but that's okay. I will pull that up and see if I can get that shared for you.
That's great. Thank you, Bessie Jo.
All right, well, we'll get started. Thank you guys for having us. My name is Chris Demo and I'm here with Megan Minchell and we're here on behalf of Idaho Headwaters Economic Study Group. We're just here today to introduce our group and explain to you who we are and what our goals are. Next slide.
So the Idaho Headwaters Economic Study Group is a group of businesses locally who would like to better understand and have more information regarding the economic impacts of the Stibnike Gold Project for business community. Our goal is to seek and share information to help the business community make more educated decisions and comments regarding the proposed Stibnike Gold Project. Next slide, please.
So here you can see, just for illustration, of the location of the proposed project in relation to Valley County communities. You can see, there's actually some animation in the slides, so if you click through a couple of them. Yep, that's the location there in the circle. And then it's a location of Highway 55 to demonstrate traffic to and from the mine. There's Warm Lake Road, the main access road to the mine there. And then click it again, that's a proposed 12-mile road paralleling Fringe Church Wilderness. So looking at the map, you can see, generally speaking, the mine's location is approximately the same distance from McCall as it is from Cascade and Donley. Next slide.
So, so the scale of this project is, you know, generated some concerns when it first became public regarding the possible impacts on a sustainable Valley County economics. Our local economies rely heavily on money generated from tourism and outdoor recreation, as Belinda mentioned. The mine could present a potential threat to these industries, but ultimately it does affect all businesses, positive and negative. There are concerns about the limitations of the EIS, of the draft EIS written in by the Forest Service and the inadequacies of the initial DIS were acknowledged pretty thoroughly enough that the supplemental EIS was required, which is expected to be released in the fall of 2022. Next slide. So the initial analysis for the DEIS was commissioned by the mining company and documented only really the potential benefits of the proposed mine. This is an abridged quote you'll see on the screen from Highland Economics, the contractor that commissioned the study, acknowledging the limitations of the study and that it was stopped short of providing a lot of economic data about the impacts on economic activities like recreation and tourism. Next slide, please. And this is also an example here of one of the comments, the public comments made on the DEIS that highlights the specific factors that we would like explored in more detail because they pertain to our area and our concerns. Small businesses, you know, this isn't about opposing the mine for us. We are just a group of small businesses that really value public information and information being available to us on anything that could potentially impact us in time for us to be able to make public comment when the supplemental EIS comes out. So we really need as much information about the things that impact us directly prior to that time so that when the public comment area or timeframe opens up that we are able to come to the table in an educated way. Next slide. So this is showing some of the socioeconomic items that were identified in the DEIS. One was that the tax revenue primarily goes to federal and state governments and outside of those areas, none, as far as we can tell, not much will go to the local governments. That second bullet point is supplies and materials. It'll be negligible what will be purchased in the local areas, there won't be that kind of positive influx of, on the economy from materials being purchased in the local area. The last one is the short-term nature. Mining employment doesn't make it likely that workers will be super invested in the community and it'll have little positive impact on the local economy in that way. So these concerns are some of the reasons we're asking for a comprehensive analysis of the effects of our, on our local community and our economy.
And just to reiterate too, those were items that were identified in the draft. And here's another list of possible infrastructure concerns that we have as well, some of which are not, you know, addressed. Like responsibilities for capital improvements, maintenance on infrastructure that'll come along with the proposal. Is mining of this scale compatible with Valley County's comprehensive plan and values? We're all well aware of stresses on our affordable housing and our local employee competition could be affected as well. You know, labor shortages are something that we're all aware of and concerned about. And also, you know, to directly quote the EIS, they say in the EIS that adverse impact on the public school system could be very substantial if the current programs and facilities have insufficient capacity to absorb that additional student enrollment. So that's a quote, straight from the EIS. And there's another quote in there, adverse affordable housing availability impacts could result. So they're already acknowledging these as adverse impacts and we just want to explore that further and get more details about what these impacts can be.
Right, so I'm working for the school district for a number of years. You know, I'm on the crisis housing committee for the school district and we're dealing with these things directly right now and we, the reality of the school district's current situation is that we don't have the capacity for an influx, even if it were just, you know, managers and those who are relocating to the area for the mine. We don't have the capacity to handle what we're already handling. And so, so we do just want to, we want to find out more about that. What does that look like in past communities that have done things like this so that we can prepare for it and know what we're at? Now, next slide is just a summary. That the initial DEIS isn't comprehensive and we can't know for sure that the supplemental will cover all of the concerns we have. So we can see there will be some potential socioeconomic effects. We can see that there are infrastructure concerns that weren't fully addressed in the DEIS and this is why we believe we do need a comprehensive analysis in time to be able to really educate ourselves and the public prior to the supplemental EIS coming out and that public comment period opening. The next slide. Thank you. So this subject's very important to local businesses. It was started by a small handful of us, but just in two weeks of business outreach, we've already had almost 50 businesses sign on to our resolution or express intent to sign. You know, we have a couple dozen more that we're in contact with that we're, or going to be in contact with and we're excited to see how that grows, but it's very clear to us already in just such a short timeframe that there is a lot of interest in having this information available to us. The mine will have generational impacts on the area, positive and negative, and it is important that we have all the information needed to make educated decisions regarding the proposed mine before that time comes. Next slide.
So you guys have had a copy of our resolution. Just a little bit of background. You know, we have worked tirelessly on that resolution over the past two months and these are the areas that we wanted to make sure we addressed, kind of a summarized bullet points of the key components of our resolution. So, yep, if you have any questions about that, we can, we can take those at the end, but, yeah, next slide, please. So just going forward, as far as the group's concerned, right now, we're in the stages where we're advancing this to other fellow businesses to sign on to our resolution and we're seeking municipalities to sign on to our resolution in support of it as well. And then we're hoping to, in the near future, advance our resolution to the Valley County Commissioners for consideration and potential funding of a study like this. So, and then generally speaking, you know, if we can get the study funded and done before the SEIS is released, we'll make all that information public knowledge and spread it so that, you know, the community and business stakeholders in this community can make their own decisions. So, yeah, going forward as well, our goal with this meeting too is that we can maybe make this an action item on your next agenda so you could decide whether or not McCall City Council can sign on to our resolution in support of it before we advance it to the Valley County Commissioners.
Yeah, so all we're asking the city council for at this point is to sign on to the fact that we would like to have this information and we're going to bring it to the county commissioners with all of our signatures and move it forward and see where it ends. So we'd just like to make it an action item for your next meeting if we can. If you have any questions, I think that's it for right now.
So I think we have lots of questions. Let me, let me just, as a former federal employee that did a lot of planning on the Pitt National Forest, I'm concerned that the approach taken that you're proposing is an independent study. So why, have you talked to the forest supervisor, for example, or the regional forester? This will be a federal decision and they are responsible for the NEPA document and possible appeals of such document. Federal government will administer the contracts on the ground mining operations. So I'm just puzzled why you're asking the city and county to do an economic study and social economic study.
We're hoping that with this information that we can, you know, just make better public comment. When we reach the public comment period, when the SEIS is released, we just want everybody to have all the facts before that public comment period commences so that the Forest Service can take those comments into consideration when making their decision.
Yeah, and our goal was by reaching out to the smaller municipalities and the local ones is that as stewards of the community, we felt that you guys would be invested as much as we are in wanting this information to be out in the public for small businesses and the public at large so that we can have the information we need prior to then making comment, you know, when that time comes so the Forest Service can and the federal. know, when that time comes so the Forest Service can, and the federal government can take that into account.
You're, in your presentation, you had a couple of slides that offered some critique and it was really interesting on the existing draft EIS. How has that been received by the regional forester or the forest supervisor? Have they made any commitments to look into those issues that you identify?
I think that in part, that's why the supplemental EIS is coming out because all of the critique that we had and that, especially in that slideshow, was based on what came out of that original draft EIS. And a lot of it was included. It was the limitations that were listed in the EIS and then that public comment period afterwards, what came with that. And so, I do think that their response thus far has been to pursue the supplemental EIS, but mostly we just felt that we can't really have the guarantee that all of the information will be encompassed in that, in that supplemental draft. And so, we wanted to have this assumption because a study like this takes months. So, we were hoping to have the information available prior to the SEIS coming out and that public comment opening at that time. So...
Thank you. So, council, what questions do you have of either Megan or Chris on this presentation?
I have kind of a comment and question. I guess I'd like to go back in time to when the city of McCall decided not to sign the agreement that was going around because a lot of the comments, and I was one of the commenters on this, was we didn't know what the environmental or community or whatever the impacts were before the draft EIS came out. So, we didn't want to sign something. I think that was the right decision and, you know, so now here we are with hopefully, you know, a supplemental draft coming out, but I see value in at least discussing this or thinking about this because our businesses are, you know, definitely concerned that they're a part of our community. And, you know, I've been in the federal government as well. I'm on the other, I'm out of the federal government now, but, you know, sometimes having companies do studies is like the chicken guarding the hen house or the fox guarding the hen house. I see this as a potential, maybe if we got an independent study and of course, you know, who knows what Perpetua would think about this, but looking at those impacts and seeing if there's a community benefit agreement, a real one that we can enter into, once we know what those impacts might be on our schools. And of course, they're going to have their own study and they're going to have, you know, their own impacts and that sort of, you know, both people, both entities stay at, you know, different ends and, you know, potentially come to an agreement, assuming that, you know, your study finds something different than what Perpetua's study does or the study you're proposing. So, that's kind of my perspective. I guess that's not a question, but except that is that, I mean, aside for commenting because, you know, the Forest Service is, you know, it's disclosure of impacts, right? It's not fix everything. So, do you see a different way of using that, like that, for example, like that kind of thing or some other way to use this study other than just commenting to the Forest Service?
I think that, you know, it is our hope that, you know, you would think that Perpetua would want this study to happen as well, you know, because they would want to present the community with as much information as they possibly could, you know? And it's our goal too, that this, you know, that this is an unbiased study, that this is as unbiased as possible. We just want the information available.
Yeah. And I like your point Julie about, you know, if that, when that study comes out, regardless of what it tells us, that then, you know, Perpetua then has another opportunity and the Forest Service has another opportunity to kind of relay that information to the public and then, yeah, come into that community agreement phase where now that we have even more information about what this, what's going to happen and what could potentially happen, we can then make decisions accordingly and Perpetua can as well. We don't, we don't have any expectations about what the study will find. We really want it to be fully unbiased. One of the contractors we talked to is actually Highland who did the initial, one of the studies for the EIS and the DEIS. And so, you know, we want it to be unbiased. That's what we're looking for. We're looking for as much information as possible, so...
Yeah. Do you, I know you're going to other communities, Cascade and Donnelley, I imagine, and Valley County. Do you see, let's say if not everybody signs on or only one community signs on, are you, are you, I guess that would be the focus on that community or are you looking for a more regional analysis even if, you know, let's say McCall signs on, Donnelley signs on, Cascade doesn't, you know, are you, are you going to be looking at them separately or?
I think we would like to get an overall analysis. Like often when these studies have been done in the past independently like this, they, did you encompass the whole region? And I think that's important because even if, you know, Cascade or whoever, Riggins, whatever municipality doesn't necessarily want to sign on to it upfront, they can still benefit from that information in the end. And so, we don't want to necessarily exclude any municipality or any particular part of the region because they haven't signed on to it. I think we, we want this information to be available to everybody and especially when we're looking at, you know, Cascade and even all of those little communities in between, they're, you know, there will be impacts all along the road and so we want that to be broad enough to cover all of those areas.
Thank you.
Mike, your questions that you might have for the group tonight?
What about Lyle?
You want to have Lyle go first?
Well, because we're going counterclockwise.
Let's go counterclockwise.
Well, I just wanted to, I don't want to get in front of you.
I jumped in.
Oh, no.
I think information is really good, but to design a study begins with the process even to design the study. And I think the Belinda's point, you know, you got to start at the table. And to me, that means the Forest Service, if we could get the right representatives from the Forest Service to say, what is it we really want to know that we don't know now and who wants to know it and what will they do with it? You know, are we doing this for the businesses in McCall specifically or the businesses in the area? So, for me to think about the city of McCall signing on, it begins with a regional approach and all the players sitting down and saying, you know, Perpetua may go, we're interested in that piece also. The Forest Service may say, that has no impact on what we're going to do. So, I really think we need to shake, shake it out a bit with, and we have the opportunity to do that because we meet with all those cities and the county commissioners so that agenda is normally really full to look at our shared interests because it's shared. The type of information I think we want that relates to all, to all of us and yet is broad enough and yet narrowly defined enough that something new, something significant or something uncovered that we don't have. So, I would like to have that done first before we sign on to something is my initial thought because it, to me, is the process, the defining, what do we want to know? Okay? That's my first preliminary thought. On the, may the slower thinker of the group, I'll come back around with more thought.
Didn't seem like slow thinking to me. I think everything that I'm hearing is kind of great questions and great comments. I guess, you know, and to those points is, you know, the decision maker, I mean, as we go to the decision maker and then we, like I guess one question I have is in being effective in trying, if there's a hole in the Forest Service process that didn't get all the information, then is the Forest Service not being receptive in some way and allowing the process to happen to such to get that information? Or are there concerns that can be addressed with Perpetua and to say, you know, have they been contacted and are, if there's a concern that something's missing, I mean, it's worth having a conversation, I would think. And if a conversation hasn't been had with Perpetua along those lines and they're not receptive and then, you know, is it that they're not receptive to the impacts that might be not addressed in the, I haven't read the environmental statement, but, you know, so I get... What's that?
It's in two huge finders on my doss. But don't bother, a new one's coming out.
Okay. So, I guess the question is, is, you know, because I hear your guys' concerns and coming from, and what the big concerns are with the community, but in being effective in getting questions answered, what's the most effective way to get the questions answered, to get the information and/or to effectively make progress in those regards? So, again, so if, you know, if there's something that's missing, have all the places to get that information been vetted? For instance...
Well, that's part of any process though. That's the public comment. That's the, you know, and that's what happened this last time. That's why they're doing a supplemental DEIS. I mean, there were significant...
There were gaps.
Numbers of significant comments with significant gaps and, I mean, as you guys know, I'm involved in the environmental side of things and experts were hired, you know, because it's complicated stuff. And I think the economic stuff is complicated stuff too. And that's where the process benefits, you know? I mean, the Forest Service, yeah, they have the final authority to approve the stuff. They look at it and make sure it's adequate, but, but that goes through this process of the comment period of the public bringing this stuff forward, you know, whether it's local conditions or this or that or whatever. I mean, that's, you know, so, I mean, it's that process and they're saying, you know, potentially one reason or one thing they can use this report is to, you know, be able to send their comments in that process.
Well, and because we have, I mean, here we've got, you know, a couple, we've got a couple of people representing other people that are, you know, that I certainly know in the community, be great people and lots of people committed to our community and wanting to make sure that things, as things change or things may change or things are happening in our community, that we're all kind of coming from the same point. So, I guess just the question of, like, one of the big takeaways I got, maybe it's just my interpretation, is that there's this question or concern that certain things weren't addressed, that they're saying, well, we'd like these, we'd like to try to get these addressed. How do we go about doing that? Did I hear that right?
Well, so, I think that for us, what it comes down to is that like even in the DEIS, they acknowledge the significant limitations of the information that was provided and the Forest Service acknowledged that, as did the contractor who put it out. And, and that's why they called for the supplemental DEIS, but the reality, when we read through the draft DEIS is that it was benefits only. There was very little information, if any, about any possible negative impact at all. And we know just from experience that there's no way, there's never any negative impacts. And so, that helped, that led us to think that maybe there was, you know, it just leaned too far in one direction and we really want to have something that's very comprehensive before, again, before that. Because like, when you look at the timeline of the way that this works, when this, when the SEIS comes out, the public comment period is brief and it's right around that same time. And so, for us, getting that information out prior to that time means that the public has had time to absorb it and to acknowledge and to educate themselves and then to make public comment that's meaningful going back to the Forest Service. That even, whether the SEIS does cover that stuff or not, which I, we've seen from experience, it doesn't always, we can be educated enough to make the comments the Forest Service and Perpetua need to hear to address all of those concerns when that time comes before the major decisions are made. So...
So, regardless who pays for this, how it's funded, the points that Julie, Lyle, and Mike made are really important in this process. And I would summarize it this way. The Forest Service has the responsibility, federal government, to take in your comments that have been put into place before the comment period was over in the DEIS. They also have an obligation to read your comments such as the packet that we received. Even though that comment period on the draft is over, Forest Service has not issued a decision. So, they still are obligated to read your comments. They're obligated to meet with you in person and state your case of, here's the information we think should be available in the final document. Because you as a commenter are entitled to, in some decisions, NEPA decisions, you have the ability to appeal the decision and you need to know, you know, what are the facts. So, I would put your efforts there and we'll, I think council will continue to stay engaged with our community and give this some thought about, you know, what you're requesting, but I don't think we're prepared tonight to quote, sign on on anything. But I sure appreciate you talking to us and educating us on your thoughts. And I think you have a right to have those meetings. I would encourage you to meet either with the regional forester or the forest supervisor.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate your time and yeah, we just wanted to put it out on the table as we start this sort of overall roundtable discussion about moving forward and looking into this. So, we appreciate your time tonight.
Lyle, you have another comment?
I have one more comment. A place about source information. And I look at the community's agreement that Perpetua set up initially. So, I was asked to set that up and to, and the person I work with, I can assure you, was very sincere in uncovering the impacts we have on the communities. And to have a form that not only says what are the impacts, but also looking at how they can, where's the most important place to assist the communities and of course, the people around the table? Now, and then the assembly of the people around the table was, part my input also, not input, but you know, we really tried to say who's in the leading position in the communities to be able to help judge these impacts. So, I think, but you made a good point, you know, that this could be good for neutral, unfavorable, but I think the point that you're, that you're saying, you come to the table with the idea of trying to find out where are the touchpoints? How might we mitigate them? I'm just bringing the point up that I think the initial people came to the table with that in mind somewhat and I don't do. So, I would say there is also a source of maybe looking at that original, the people who sit on that and say, are you biased? Do you feel like Perpetua is trying to manipulate something here or are we looking after community needs? So, anyhow, that just goes back to the point. I would, I would like to make sure that the information that we need, that we know what we need. And, you know, and I think, I think everybody's in favor, you know, in favor, you know, but we got to know what we need, who's responsible for it and how to collect it before we can sign on, as Mayor Box said.
Lyle, going back to your point before, do we need to get together with the other communities and, you know, at our next meeting with them to talk about this? Is that something we would want on the agenda?
Yeah, let's do some thinking. We've got a lot of stuff to take care of, a lot. And so, I think we need to give some careful thought to that. And I don't want to cross the line and do the work that the federal government should be doing. This is a big project and a lot of budget assigned to this and they have a responsibility to do NEPA correctly. It's a very serious matter. So, I'm hoping that they're stepping up and doing all of this. And I'm reluctant to, you know, insert our expertise and resources and time when it may not be appropriate. So, I'm a little hesitant on that. But I certainly appreciate you educating us on this and I know, you know, it will, I'm sure your efforts will help find out what effects really are in the socioeconomic side. So, I appreciate you taking that serious. I think, I think we'll draw that to a close tonight and thanks for giving us more time to think about this. We'll get back to you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. We know you have a lot of decisions right now, so thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're going to go into our report section. We've got some pretty meaty... We've got some pretty meaty items, so we'll try to later make, there are important decisions tonight. So I'm going to try to facilitate a pretty rapid-fire review of all the reports. Thank you, Belinda. All right, all of us have reports in our, in our thick binders or our digital files that we've reviewed. I think we've had a chance to look at that. Are there any questions for Chamber of Commerce? Lindsay, thanks for joining us tonight.
I have to go also, got to pick kids up from hockey, so I'll be quick with some additional items. Magazines arrived today, so you'll be starting to see those in town for the summer. Our spring membership breakfast is next Thursday from 8:30 to 10:00. I invite everybody to come. Some of your staff will be speaking on important community issues that you guys are working on, and also how some of our businesses and members can be more informed and more involved. So I hope you guys can come. It's free to the public, and it'll be delicious food. June board elections for anyone interested in running for our chamber board. We have some spots open for that, and we're looking to continue to build our team. I will be, our office will be closed tomorrow from 1:00 to 5:00. So Julie and I can go to the Idaho Climate Economy Impacts Assessment, which I'm really looking forward to, out at Tamarack. And great job to Craig Utter and the Pantland Trust, and everybody else who works so hard, and the University of Idaho, too. And then also, I want to give a shout out. On June 10th, there's Fish Idaho Fest that Jordan Messner and Idaho Fishing Game has been putting together to, for folks that want to learn more about fish management programs in the region, which I think is super cool. Beer, fish, outside, broken horn. So anyway, that's, that's kind of all I got. One more thing, we did go through an RFP process that we're required to do through our Idaho Travel Council grant every five years for large contracts. And we elected a new record of agent to work with us on our messaging and marketing. And so they're called Madden Media, if you want to look them up. They're a bit, a little bit bigger, but we really connected with them well and feel like they understand our small town and our new messaging moving forward to educate versus promote. So anyway, that's kind of the short of it. Does anyone have any questions?
Council questions for Lindsay.
And for me, thanks, Lindsay. You always send us good written reports.
Oh, thanks, guys. I actually, I enjoy doing them, and I enjoy seeing you. So thank you for all you do.
Thanks for all you do.
We're all thumbs up here. You can go to the hockey rink and.
Okay. Good luck with all your work. Good night.
Thanks.
Okay, let's go on to department reports. Any questions from anyone on council on any monthly department report?
None for me.
None here.
No questions, but thanks for adding the Pant Lakes tour district information.
Meeting minutes?
Yeah.
And we just had the next round yesterday. So when we get those minutes, I'll include those again.
That was great. Thank you for, that's a good.
And Lyle's been attending, so.
All right.
And I think I would just highlight that I'd also put the flyer in for this youth project that we're working with, Association of Idaho Cities, and the high school on. So there's this tandem tour that everyone's invited to, the flyers in the packet, May 25th, so before we meet again at the high school library at 3:15. And so Meredith from Community and Economic Development's been working with the high school and youth, and trying to get some youth interaction off the ground between the city and them. So just want to give a little shout out for that work and support her efforts there.
Is Meredith, Meredith, you are online tonight, correct?
That's correct, Mayor Bob.
All right, well, thanks for helping me get that tandem event on my calendar. And I do have that on my official calendar. I will be at the library. I'm really looking forward to just being an observer and hearing how that goes. So thanks for working hard on that. Really appreciate it.
Yep, and any of the other council members are welcome to attend as well, and just support the youth in the community. So we're excited for it.
Nice work.
Okay. We do have some time for anything that council would like to share on any of their meetings, or any, any really important item that you'd like to share with us tonight, from committees you serve on. And I don't have any updates that are going to be covered on the liaison for library. That's going to be one of our big topics tonight, so I'll defer that till later. Anything you want to share, Mike?
No, we were all at the Waterways meeting, so.
That went great. Lyle, anything you want to share?
Fireways is revitalized, and Stephanie Nelson covered the grant programs for property owners to be eligible to do fire hazard mitigation on their properties. So they're publicizing that. And there's a, climate change has brought a new source of energy to that group. Drought, projected drought season. That's all. They met last week also.
Julie, anything that you'd like to share?
No, I, well, I guess yes, because I'm talking. I met with a staff person, Mick Paus, and also a board member, and just learned about what they are, all their great programs and everything. I'm going to go to a board meeting and meet.
Great.
So, yeah.
Because I think we have that on our June budget meeting to talk about.
Yeah.
Funding and.
Yeah, and I haven't been able to make it to a scenic byways committee meeting yet. They didn't have an online option last time, so. And I may have been out of town anyways. Hopefully, I'll make it the next one.
Well, great. Thanks, everyone. All right, COVID-19. Chief Williams, we've got a short report in our packet. Anything you'd like to add to that?
No, very short report. All the numbers are looking really good at this point in time. The EOC met this week, earlier this week, to discuss options moving forward. And hopefully, we'll have something to you by the next meeting as far as where we'll be progressing in the few weeks.
Thank you. Council, any quick questions for Chief on that COVID?
We still got one more meeting with you, Justin, right?
One more, Mike. That's it.
That's it, though.
Just make it for another one.
That's, I will not miss the COVID reports, that's for sure. So yes, the 26.
We got one more.
Tell everyone not to spread COVID around, so you don't have to.
Actually, Chief Williams, I will miss it, because at home, because my wife is the state COVID decision manager person. I guess, I really like your reports, and the way you collected that and that. And I hear plenty just over, overhearing at home. So I know you may not miss it, but we're kind of going to miss having your report.
There'll still be a report, it just won't be coming from me. So I believe we know who's been tagged for that report, so I'm sure he'll do a fine and upstanding job, just as he will with everything else.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, we are ready to enter into the next part of our meeting, which is a public hearing. This public hearing is about temporary businesses and code cleanup, code amendment. It's an action item. The agenda bill is 22-118, request to approve. The purpose of the public hearing is, let's see. I need to look at summary statement from the agenda to get this straight. So let me pull up my agenda. Okay. Primary goals of the code amendment are as follows. Provide clarity and direction for temporary businesses, food trucks, and similar. Fix some typographical errors and code texts that do not align perfectly with the intent of the code or administrator practice. So that's the purpose of tonight's public hearing. I will officially open the public hearing.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
No, no, you won't.
I won't.
So you start here, before you get to here. Start here.
That's right. We've got to do some disclosures.
Thank you.
Okay, councilors, has anyone been contacted regarding this particular application? Yes?
No.
Good answers. My answer is also no. Okay, then there's nothing to disclose, so I may continue. And I'll call for a motion to open the public hearing. And thank you, Bessie Jo.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you both. Motion has been made and seconded to open the public hearing. Can we do this with voice vote, or do we do a roll call, Bessie Jo?
Whatever the council would like.
Voice.
Voice vote is good? Okay, all in favor of opening the public hearing tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Hearing, no one opposed this motion carries. And we're officially open for the public hearing. And I think I covered the summary of that. So I'm going to look for some help from Brian. So can you establish the facts of the application and give us an overview? And then we'll continue on in all the specifics, Brian.
All right, yes, thank you, Mayor Giles. The application is for a code amendment to update Titles III and Title IX. There is an ordinance in your packet. That is the document that you'll be voting on tonight. Also included in your packet is a slightly more readable staff commentary version of the contents of the ordinance, split up into the cleanup stuff and the temporary vendor regulation items.
All right. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty lengthy package. We're looking forward to having you help us go through that, Brian. But before I do that, there are some documents that I think Brian has addressed. And this is a public hearing, and the notification and such. Do any of you on council have any objections to admitting any of these documents to the official record?
No objections.
No objections from council? Okay, so we're good on that, Brian. Would you please give us your presentation on the code amendment then?
All right, yes, thank you, Mayor Giles. And I'm just going to start off by apologizing for discussing food at 6:30, when you guys still have a couple hours of council meeting to go. So I'll go through the cleanup language first. Just go through section by section, and feel free to jump in and ask questions as I go along. I think that's going to be the easiest way to tackle all of this. 3.202, this is really clarifying. There are two geographic datums that surveyors will use around town. One of them says the ordinary headwater mark of the lake is 4,998 and change. Another one is 4,992 and change. This is bringing it into alignment with our control grid and survey standards with the city, and clearly identifying that. Then the stuff about streets. Title VIII really doesn't say anything about roadway classifications anymore. So I think the most relevant document is the roadway functional classification map that is currently included in the transportation master plan. So make that the official designator of what is and is not a collector arterial, local street, et cetera. And then 3.302, accessory structures such as garages and things like that, that meet all the standards in 3.8. Should not be in administrative use, and we don't really want to be reviewing every single one of them that comes through. And then 3.303, the code as it's currently written is a little confusing on which one governs the front property line versus the any property line adjacent to a collector or arterial street. So this adds a little clarifying language to that table. 3.304, we have been relying on a rather grainy chart for a long time, and an internal Excel spreadsheet that we made. This establishes some formulas that are specific and concise to get to close to the same standards as the old chart was, because I wanted it to be fairly straightforward to plug in a different formula, and understandable. It's not quite exactly the same, but it's pretty close.
Can I ask a question on this?
Yeah.
Mike has a quick question, Brian?
Yep.
And this may directly relate to my, the fact that I avoided taking any kind of precalculus when I was in high school, never took any in college, and algebra's not my strong suit, despite it being one of my son's. The prior code, the way it's written, over the years, for me, and certainly working with clients of mine in real estate, has been very, at least on this subject, has been very easy.
Yeah.
I've felt that it's easy, and I can explain it to somebody. And as I was reading this, and again, this might be my deficiency and my inability to understand algebra, looks extremely complex, and I couldn't, and again, this may just be not my strong point, but I certainly couldn't explain it to somebody else, and I have a hard time understanding what I'm going to do here to figure out the question if I'm building a house.
So there is a chart in there that you can still point to, and still use that.
Okay.
But then we occasionally get these questions. Is it a seven-foot, three-inch setback, or is it a seven-foot, five-inch setback?
Okay.
These things are occasionally very important to laying out a house. And so having these admittedly kind of wonky-looking decimal formulas in there.
Well, and letters in italics are always a little bit challenging for a guy like me.
Yeah.
So you're saying it's the same thing? You can point to somebody to the chart, or you can point them to the algebra?
Right.
Is this algebra?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep, there's letters, normally numbers.
Okay.
Yes, and Brian and Mayor Bob, if I can provide a comment. I'm equally terrible at math and failed precalculus many times. But the benefit of the equation is that Brian built a calculator that we can now send to applicant teams, and they can just type into the calculator instead of trying to throw a dart, a dot at the chart, a dart at the chart, and going for it. So they don't even have to do the math. We can just actually give them a calculator and call it a day.
Okay, that's terrific. Good, good job on that. So have you had a lot of people that you, I'm sure you've had some contact with folks that do developments and builders, et cetera? Have they been pretty happy with your calculator and some of the changes that you've made?
Yes.
Yeah, we shared a draft of this earlier on with some of the local architecture and design firms, and most of them seem very happy with having some formulaic, consistent things that architect brains tend to like.
Okay, so they can get straight to the exact seven, seven-foot, three-and-a-half inches, and know that that's where we're going to be, rather than it being off by an inch or two based on the chart? That's the point of what you're doing there?
Right. Yep.
Sometimes you got to be speaking to the lowest common denominator in the room, which in this case, I think it might, you know, be me on that one. But you can keep going.
Okay, so 3.306 is very similar, except it's regarding maximum level lock coverage instead of site setbacks. The formulas in there are even scarier looking because they are getting to percentage points from tens to hundreds of thousands of square feet of lot size. So just the reduction factor in them makes them look really terrifying. But again, there is a chart still. You can point to the chart. We have a spreadsheet ready to go for, should this get adopted? And yeah, generally the same, same outcomes as the previous chart, just a little more quantified. 3.308, the way it was written previously regarding accessory dwelling units, made it seem like the rules applied if you were long-term renting or short-term renting, which I think is more, the intent was more to govern use of short-term rentals and accessory dwelling units and making sure that you have all the permit standards in place. 3.309, our definition of multifamily dwelling in 3.302 is three or more units. And so I went through and made everything else line up to that instead of having two different sets of standards. 3.402, the, I think just through some various code amendments throughout the years, the footnotes didn't all point to the wrong, right locations and some stuff that didn't exist, so I think that up. 3.4061, regarding parking in the urban renewal districts. A key use of funds for urban renewal districts, McCall, is to build public parking lots. And so if you've been in that for a long time and it has paid for public parking in your vicinity, you shouldn't be exempted from enjoying the benefits of that even though the URA has sunsetted. And so adding in current or former urban renewal districts achieves that.
Question from Mike on that, Brian?
So, okay, so the discussion is that it, what, what we've had in our code is that in the current urban renewal, urban renewal district, there is no off-street parking requirement for businesses unless it's something that they so dis, or for that developer or the whoever's purchasing the property or remodeling the property, what have you. They don't have to provide off-street parking in the, in the district, but what we're suggesting here is that the change is going to, because the new district is now essentially downtown or the downtown west district, that the, that the mill district, if you develop, if someone's going to be developing in that district, they still do not have a requirement to provide onsite parking.
Yes.
So that was kind of, you guys talked that through and felt that that was a pretty reasonable approach.
Yeah.
That's what we're hearing. So that's a good one for people that know and understand. Probably a lot of people don't because it, then it doesn't, the central business district has parking requirements. However, if you're in the former urban renewal district boundary or the current one, you don't have those onsite parking requirements.
Yes.
Yes. We're all on the same page. Okay.
All right.
It's all good work. We just, just wanted to clarify and all that kind of thing.
3.062, when we started in on the library we discovered that they are not in the use chart for public zones, which seems like an oversight, so we add them in as a permanent use in the civic zone. And then some cleanup on the footnotes regarding housing in civic zones and required to be part of a mixed-use project. I just generally found that, I think, very little sense, and so I condensed it into some more readable and understandable versions. 3.603 refers to fending, which should be fencing. Bicycle parking in 3.8063, I have been requiring people to, just as a condition of approval, to comply with the International Walking and Biking Association of Professionals or something to that effect. Their standards, this just incorporates some key elements into that, into our code for what bicycle racks should look like and function as. 3.810.
Sorry, one more.
Yep.
On the bicycles. And, and part of what I'm getting at is we want, always we want our code to be effective and we also want it to be easily read and easily understood by people. Someone you could say, hey, listen, just go to the city code and this should answer your questions on what you can build, how you can build it, what's required, et cetera, et cetera. We want it as clean and easy and as straightforward to read as possible. So on this one, because this is all, all the, this bicycle one is new, can you, just a little more background on, I guess one question I have is, is in doing this, it, it's pretty, pretty specific. And, and so in, like, so the information came from, I guess you just kind of alluded to where you got kind of this template, but then also as it relates to, for instance, like, you know, some of the local architects or things like that, like, how, tell me about vetting it up before we were making a decision on something that seems like it's a, and I'm not questioning you, Brian, at all. I'm just
Yeah.
questioning, are, are we being on the bicycle one, is it overly, is it too restrictive? Is it too specific to exactly what you have to have versus somebody saying, well, you know, we have existing businesses, we have existing commercial buildings that have bike parking or don't, and now a new, a new applicant comes in and they've got some pretty specific stuff. And I'm not saying that I'm a for or against, I just want to make sure that we're always vetting everything out and making sure that we are making decisions that are the best for the greatest number of people within the community, all people.
Yeah. Yeah, so these standards, I did, like I said, I passed this along to some of the local design firms. I had a discussion with one of the architects at Epicos regarding the bicycle parking. Really, their only comment was if there was an opportunity for a carve-out for bike parking at schools and making smaller standards for that, and I felt like that was a little too specific to include in here. And I think it's something that we can work out through a design review process or something like that to get a little bit of flexibility in there and you know, philosophically, I think it's important that even if it's at a school, it is, the bike parking is capable of holding an adult bicycle. Right? And that it works for everybody. And I will say that the the standards are from a international organization and this is a fairly common code language for bike parking and standards in there. It's like there, there's several other cities that also use this. So if you're working regionally, you're probably not gonna be too caught off guard by these standards.
Okay, so the feedback you got was that this wasn't too too restrictive or anything like that?
No.
Okay. And again, I mean, and don't take me wrong, I wouldn't want it to be misconstrued that I'm not a big advocate of bicycling and self-propelled and walking and everything else. I just want to make sure that we have very clear and easily understood.
Yep, and I think updating our commercial design standards, like we have a, we have a handout sort of a document that we give to developers that kind of goes through our design standards and just making sure this incorporate into it. It will be a helpful tool in making sure that it is understandable.
Okay.
Okay. So then, 3.810, fencing and walls. Didn't really delineate very well between rules for freestanding walls versus retaining walls. And so just added in retaining wall where applicable, freestanding wall where applicable. So 3.905, we have some rules that we will probably discuss a little bit later for signage included in title four for temporary vendors and craft fairs. And so just add that to the exempt sign standard, the things that are exempted so that we're not conflicting code. 3.1301, since we send out administrative approvals for agency comment, want energy, hearing review and all those things, 15 days seemed difficult to achieve constantly. We try our best and we do pretty good at it. So we're just extending that to 30 days. 3.14053, we got a request from the Valley County Astronomical Society to include provisions on color temperature for light bulbs for exterior lighting to limit it to 3,000 Kelvin to help protect the night sky. That seemed like a very reasonable thing to ask for and so we threw it. 3.16, again, bringing in the multifamily definition standardized across. There's a typo for requirements. 3.1603, we occasionally get building permits for 3,400 square foot houses and then a week later get a building permit for a deck to add on to that. And so just giving the, us as administrators a little power to declare nonsense when they, when we get things like that. If we determine that they are splitting up their plans to avoid designer view requirements, we can still require designer view. And then also adding accessory dwelling units to the list of administratively approvable applications. And 3.1606, this is what we have received public comment on regarding this application. The current code says an architect stamp is required if the living area is greater than 3,500 square feet. The intent of the code is to ensure some regularity oversight from private side of this for the bulk and scale amassing of large residential structures. And so in that light, it doesn't really matter if it's living space, garage space, covered patio. We want them to have an architect stamp. And so we are amending this to say structure size as defined in 3.202, which is the total living area plus total garage space plus any covered decks or patios.
So Brian, on that, that, in our packet, that was the one item that we, as you, as you mentioned, it got some review from the Building Contractors Association of Southwestern Idaho and a company called Draft Tech. Do you want to get into those kind of questions later at the end of the report? Or would that be appropriate just to ask you a simple question right now on that?
Just go ahead and ask, go ask him now.
So we, you know, we're certainly not experts in any of this stuff and I handed this to our attorney tonight and we're just wondering, are, are we on solid ground? I mean, the way you read these critiques, it's like, makes you wonder, but what's your position on that after, after you and your staff reviewed those two letters?
Yeah, so this code has been on our books for a long time. Like I said, this is how we have been interpreting the code because that is the intent to include structure size. And so this is really just bringing it into alignment with administrative practices. I don't see, and I've not been informed by any of the city attorneys, that we are in shaky legal ground on that.
So let me just ask that.
Yeah. So Mayor Council Matt Johnson, City Attorney filling in for Bill Nichols. I've reviewed the section of state code referenced in the letter with sort of this, that this may be illegal type of thing. As Brian said, the change is really minimal. So if, if this was an illegal provision of city code, it's been illegal for a long time. This changed, this change doesn't do it. The issue they seem to be getting at is the section of Idaho code they cover is about women, what has to go into becoming a licensed architect to get that stamp. But then they provided an exemption, which is a specific part the comments referencing about that that architectural stamp's not required for buildings in the state, sets the exemption at residences over three stories. And so I don't see any reason why the city wouldn't be able to require an architect stamp at a stricter level if it wanted, which is essentially what this code has always done. And you're just redefining now. The legal argument, I suppose, would be whether the state has somehow preempted the field. I'm not aware of any case law on that. Obviously haven't had the time to research it. But I don't have any major concern with you proceeding with this change.
Thank you both.
Good question, Bob. So, and just being clear on this, getting back to the architect stamp, so you haven't always needed an architect to stamp your plans, right? And we'll call, help, help us, give us the big picture on this so everybody can understand. And so if there's somebody listening or somebody comes back and watches it or has questions that we're really, really clear on on the big picture here.
Yeah, so if a residential structure is under 3,500 square feet, an architect stamp is not required and a draftsman can create the plans for you. If you get over that threshold, then we are required to get an architect stamp.
And how long has that been in place? That, the intent of that law, I mean, our local ordinance, has that been like 20 years or?
Yes, I believe it started in the early Delta days of city planning.
I can add to that, Brian. This is Michelle Grunavell, Community and Economic Development Director. That code went into place in 2006 when we revised all, all of the planning and zoning codes and we added a design review process. So it was specific to, the idea was it's larger scaled homes require a licensed architect to stamp the plans to mitigate kind of size and scale. So that's always been the intent. What Brian is presenting tonight is basically just a codification of the practice that, how it's been administered since 2006.
Thanks. And good question because it, it is very confusing.
Well, I want to say that I also heard from somebody, you know, kind of on the streets, said something to the effect of, you know, McCall's making it harder and now it's kind of favoring architects and any plans have to go through an architect. And that comment then is not true. So if you're designing an 1,800 square foot house, you do not need to use an architect.
Right.
And you're just, and we're just further clarifying what living area means or what we're using as far as determining what 3,500, that 3,500 square foot threshold.
What constitutes 3,500 square feet?
So, so really the only difference in the, the amendment that you're making here, the change to code, is is to further define what the thirty five hundred square feet is.
Yeah.
To be more clear.
Yes, correct.
You can still use a draftsman to design your house of twenty one hundred square feet with a six hundred square foot garage.
The house I'm sitting in right now can be designed by a draftsman.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks for bearing with us. Those are, those are important things.
Yeah.
Well, we can't remember everything all the time, you know. But we wanted, that's again, just, just back to having it be clear and our minutes reflecting it and the discussion and where it came to and how we got there. And it's, it all has value. We, we or somebody has a question, we need to go back to it. I mean, I, I know I can't remember everything, but.
It's also nice having council members with diverse backgrounds because I don't run into this. You know, I wouldn't, nobody's going to talk to me on the street about the, some of these questions that you're bringing up. They do talk to you on the street. You do run into it in your daily life. And it's very helpful to have that experience to for the rest of us to get up this kind of understanding it. Thank you.
A diverse council makes better decisions.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause we all bring different questions to the table and try to make sure everybody's getting covered and getting their answers. So yeah, good point, Lyle. Thank you.
So then nine, one, oh, five. The record of survey procedures say that if an application qualifies, we can waive certain provisions of chapter nine or title nine, chapter one. That the intent of that is to be able to waive anything in title nine. So changing the word chapter to title in that. And then nine point six zero five is the last one during a subdivision preliminary plat. We made a discovery that there is a code provision requiring three extra parking spaces per residential dwelling unit on subdivisions with private streets for a total of five parking spaces per house, which is a lot. And I am not so sure that there is any reason for that to exist. And so I am proposing to eliminate it. So that is all the cleanup language. Then the food trucks, I think we go a little bit faster. There's a little less to it. We had a work session on this back in September. So this is where a lot of this language is coming from. Should hopefully embody a lot of the requests that you guys made at that time. Three point two zero two establishes definitions for temporary uses. There's three new categories in here. Temporary food vendor is a food truck or a push cart or something along those lines. Just the unit by itself. A merchandise vendor is similar, but not selling food. And then a vendor court is two or more food or merchandising vendors on one parcel or one vendor that has seating shade areas, canopy, tables, things like that, that are generally outside of their contained unit.
Brian, can I ask a question? So, you know, the temporary merchandise vendor mentions a tent and the food vendor doesn't. I mean, I, you know, I, like all the, all the food vendor ones seem to be sort of what I think of as normal food truck and stuff. But you know, what about someone that, you know, and I'm thinking more of like what you see at the market. And so maybe the market is different. But you know, someone wants to set up a little table with a tent and sell bread or something. Or cupcakes or, so is that covered under this?
Right. Limited duration events like the weekend farmer's market and things like that are still going to be managed through title four.
Yeah, but if someone wanted to do this, you know.
Yeah.
Somewhere else.
You know, as, as far as like somebody setting up a tent as a food truck or a temporary food vendor, I think that would fall into the category of similar device.
Well, and it would have to, if it's, if it's something that they is consumable right away, it has to pass some amount of inspection at the health department. So if, you know, if it's packaged and ready to go, it's different than if it's something that they're going to eat right away. So it would be more of, it, it wouldn't be more, it wouldn't really be considered a food vendor if it's packaged and they're taking it away than when you're like buying a hamburger to eat right there.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. It does. I mean, I would eat my cupcake right away, but you know, I understand that. Yeah.
You know, it, it just depends on the intent of the.
Yeah, because I normally think about like the hot food type stuff that's prepared there and then.
Yeah. So some food is, is intended to be eaten right then and some food is intended to be taken and.
Even though the stuff that can be taken can be eaten, right? You can unwrap it and eat it.
Right. You can also have a tent, kind of like the, the guy that made burgers at the market, you know, who do tend to sit in a little bit of a food truck.
But you're getting, we're getting into central district health.
Title four stuff. Yeah.
And then just going back at this, the section H above those definitions. I think it, it just, I was reading it and I couldn't make sense of it. Is it supposed to be a minor way which is used primarily for vehicular service access to the rear or side of properties of budding a street?
Food or duck? Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, but the definition for alley or alleyway.
Oh, yes.
Section H.
What page are we on?
This is PDF one ninety seven. I'm looking at the, the not the one with the staff comments, but just the the first document that was up there. Oh, and that's, I'm sorry. While we're on this section, this doesn't have to do with the street vendors, but on E, so it'd be page one nine, PDF one ninety six. After the right of way shall not be less than forty feet. She just put wide, twenty feet wide there just to make sure that's completely clear.
Very technically speaking, I think we probably should. I prefer not to delay this ordinance. If possible, but I will take a note of that and put it up into the next cleanup.
Okay. And then I, I don't think this will delay anything, but in, in A, you use single quotes and everywhere else in that document, I think you used double quotes. Sorry, that's just a, the.
Yeah, that's.
He, you know.
Yeah. And that, so that was your question on H alley or alleyway?
Oh, I'm sorry. So it just doesn't, it's, I mean, it reads a little weird to me. It's instead of rear or side or property, should that be rear or side of properties?
Yes, it should.
And then abutting, I don't think you need the on, abutting a street.
Yeah.
If, Brian, to help you out there and, and sorry, if I can ask, I think what Julie's asking there, if we choose to move forward with move forward with this, can't we do this subject to certain?
Yeah. So if you call out each section that you make a change in, the motion would include changes as called out in three point, six point, whatever, to change this to that. It'll be a long motion, but at least you will capture all of the little changes.
Can you capture those?
I was going to say, should I rephrase all this?
You start capturing those right now.
Like the double quotes? Do I have to?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, wow.
But you've got them highlighted already on your doctor. So that might be helpful because they're good suggestions and albeit simple. But again, we're trying to have everything be very clean. And Brian said the goal of this is to tighten everything up.
Okay. So Brian, are you okay with adding wide in, in three point two oh two E?
Yes, I am okay with adding all of the things you mentioned, as long as you're willing to read the motion.
I, I am committed.
Matt, is there any shortcut we could take if there's a whole bunch of like hundreds of details of quotes?
If there's a series of minor amendments that have already been mentioned on the record and the council's in agreement, you can just make the motion at the end to be to approve the ordinance subject to the minor amendments listed by council member through, which will be provided to the clerk. He has them all written. And if you have them all written down and showing, and these are all kind of typographical or minor wording changes. They don't rise to substantive. That's perfectly fine.
Okay. Should I go ahead and state all of those right now so far? I mean, for this section?
It's really, if the council's comfortable with how you've already presented them, it's fine. If they'd like you to read them, then read them.
How many more do you have?
The, I think that's, those were, I didn't go through all of it just.
But it's, yeah.
Yeah. I think, well, and then there were a couple of tables where like the, that at least in the staff comments, it had the temporary vendor and all that in these tables of conditional use or permitted uses. And there were a couple in the first document that were missing those additions. So.
The tables are missing additions?
Yeah. So like three point four point oh two permitted and conditionally permitted uses within commercial zones. The temporary food vendor and the temporary merchandise vendor didn't get added in there and then food court.
So wait a minute, that's three point four, what's the next numbers?
Point oh two.
Point zero two, three point four, point zero two.
So for permitted and conditionally permitted uses within commercial zones. I think in the staff comment, and I didn't bring the second and split those up. I think that that table had listed under the uses, the temporary food vendor, temporary merchandise vendor and temporary food court. And it's just not in the.
In the attachment.
In the, in, it's not in the.
It's not shown in the ordinance.
It's not shown in the what?
It's not shown in the draft ordinance. It is shown in my staff report.
Right. That's correct.
What's it supposed to be then?
So in table three point four zero two, there should be.
So, so what you can do is just note that this was intended to be the table used in the staff commentary version. And that will be corrected in the final version of the ordinance.
Okay. So it's.
So is the table correct in the three point four oh two that we have in our files? Or is it the staff report that's correct?
With the staff commentaries.
The staff report's correct. I'm trying to look that up really quick. And that's the same for the, I think that's the same for the public zones too. Sorry, I don't seem to have that one tabbed. Where you added library, but I don't think you added the other ones.
Yeah.
So the intent was to stay focused on three point four zero two permitted, conditionally permitted uses, commercial zones. We're supposed to have food courts in there? Is that the intent, Brian?
So there should be a temporary food vendor, which is permitted in all commercial zones. Temporary merchandise vendor, which is administrative in neighborhood commercial and community commercial and permitted in central business district. And temporary vendor court, which is administratively approvable in neighborhood commercial and community commercial and permitted in central business district.
That's correct, according to the staff report.
Okay. So somehow can we capture that? And then you can have a, a real sleuth like Lyle's wife used to do for us.
I, I'll just, I'll just, you know, I'll go ahead and, and when I make the motion, I'll just, I'll just spell these out. It's okay.
That sounds great.
We'll help you on this.
You're going to help me on this?
No, I'm telling Brian, we'll help, we'll help you on this and Julie.
All the help I can get here. So.
Okay. Yeah. And so I'm sorry, just, oh, no, maybe I was wrong. Maybe it is in. Well, go on. Oh, oh, no, public zone. So yeah, I'm.
Yeah, I believe it is missing.
No, it, it got into the table in public zone. Sorry. So it is just that one table that, that is missing. Okay. I'm, I'm done.
No, keep on going. This is really good.
I'm done. I think I am. Yes.
So if you're not, please help us because we want, everyone wants to get this right and get it done tonight if, if possible.
Yes.
Okay, Brian. Thanks for your sense of humor and hanging in there with us.
Thank you, Brian.
You're doing great.
I know. It's easy for me to pull these up when I've got them highlighted and stuff and flipping for stuff. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be patient.
Okay. So the food truck use charts is just at, in three point three, three point four, three through point oh six, zero, two is just adding them into the charts. Some things to note in this. Food trucks are admin approval in R four through R sixteen zones. And the other two merchandise vendors and vendor courts are conditionally approvable in those same zones. The reasoning I had for this is in the winter time, we have a lot of snow. In the summertime, we have a lot of people. And so if there are HOAs or somebody like that, that have vacant snow lots or something like that, that they can get some neighborhood buy-in and come together and do a food truck for a busy weekend or make a little money. Or set up something a little more permanent and have it throughout the summer. They can do that through this process. And then also there's just, there's a lot of fringe area around central business district particularly that is residential zone, but is close enough. And again, if you can get property owner, neighborhood buy-in to play along, they could potentially use that. And so I want to give that opportunity.
Everyone good with that?
And then, yeah, generally in commercial zones, pointed as much as I can into downtown. The entitlement as easy as possible to do it downtown. But generally allowable in all locations is just a couple of extra to jump through. Outside of central business district. Administratively approvable in industrial and business park zones. Civic zones, they're only vendor courts in civic zone is admin approval. Everywhere else it's prohibited. With the exception in the footnotes that food vendors that have a concessionaire's agreement with the city for public parks are permitted to operate. Then three point eight zero five is really a lot of the meat of this. Cleaned up the language for temporary storage facilities. Just to make it a little more readable and to separate out storage and merchandising. And then food vendors, no drive up services permitted. They have to be on public or on private property, except for the places that we have kind of designed food trucks to go to. So Second Street from Lake to Park, Lenora, outside Legacy Beach. And then Park Street are the only places they'd be allowed to operate on public right away. They're allowed to drive around, but they can't park for more than ten minutes in residential zones without being actively selling. So that's, it's really intended for the ice cream trucks type of model that somebody's just going to drive around and stop when somebody comes out to buy something. And then merchandise vendors are subject to designer view if they are in a single location for more than a week straight. Then vendor courts. They are subject to designer view. As we'll see, as we'll get to, if they are not in scenic route, it's administrative. Otherwise, it is a full planning and zoning commission level designer view if they are on scenic route. Otherwise, it is a full planning and zoning commission level designer view, um, if they're on scenic route. And then. Some extra screening requirements, uh, for vendor courts on scenic route. And then again, if they are tied to a public event, they are not subject to these permits. Um, then 316 is just setting up, uh, designer view requirement, or that they are required for designer view. And then if they are eligible for administrative. And that is the end of my code amendments. Stand for any questions.
Sorry, I did have one more of these kind of, um, things. I don't know what the tab three was for. Um, so in 3.16.03A2. There were two additions in the staff report, again, that didn't make it in there. Um, so this is the applications, which are the authority of the administrator to review it and make a determination. In the staff report, um, after H, temporary merchandise vendors not located in an overlay zone was added I, and then temporary vendor courts not located in an overlay zone was added as J. And then the other subsections were all pushed down, um, lettered, you know, to, to have successive lettering, so, um.
It was intended to make it in the ordinance, so please.
Okay. And do, do we need the temporary food vendors in there, um, or is that?
No, they are not subject to designer view.
Okay. Okay, I promise that's the last one. We also have a definition of public events in Title IV also. Just thought I would put that out there.
So that's good, right, we want that in there?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean.
Well, we don't know either, we're gonna need some help on this.
Just, I didn't include a, a definition of public events in here, just saying that, uh, temporary vendors permitted through the public events process are not.
Oh, gotcha, okay, perfect.
Okay, I think we're, um, making progress in capturing all these little, I'll call them little items. I wanted to take some time for public comment to make sure that we're doing this part of the hearing correct. So Bessie Jo, we, um, I'm gonna ask you if anyone signed up to give any live testimony tonight during our public, uh, hearing?
No.
Okay, and did anyone sign up to do it on Teams?
No.
All right. Okay, and then as far as the written record, we've already discussed those, Brian, we have two. Well, I think I mentioned that to you earlier, so it's part of our record, it's part of our packet. We received one letter from the Building Contractors Association, Southwestern Idaho, and another, um, letter, public comment, uh, from a company called Draft Tech. So that's what we have as far as the written record. We've already asked you, um, both you and Matt, questions about that. So I don't think there's any further questions on that from us as council. So the next question I have is to council, uh, considering, concerning public comment. Is there any additional information you would like from staff? Okay, thank you, council. All right. So I'm gonna ask council, um, I'm gonna ask each of you one at a time what you think about this application. And we'll go around the table this way.
You like counterclockwise now?
I guess I like counterclockwise.
I like former track athlete.
Why, you're, you're, yeah, okay. I, I think they're good, um, I think they're good changes, I mean, that's, that's good. Um, I, it, you know, I think we're seeing more people trying to do food, uh, trucks and stuff like that, which is great. But, so I think some clarification on what they are allowed and allow that to do is, is good. Um, I, I like the whole bicycle thing, I like to have, I think there's some consistency there to. I have one of those that's not a fat tire, but it's a plus tire, and, um, yeah, it's kind of annoying to help people put your bike in there and, and, you know, and lock it up. I mean, I know there's a lot of old bike stands and stuff, so, um, there are so many different bikes now and e-bikes and all of this that are different shapes and sizes, so I, I think it's nice to have that consistency or that ability for people to feel like they can leave their bike safely somewhere. Um, I, I'm not concerned about the, um, I, I'm, I'm fine with the structure size, um, uh, change. Um, you have that definition already in the code, and I don't think, um, you know, there was a comment about it impacting affordable housing. I don't think there are too many affordable housing, uh, units that are in the 2,300 square foot range, so I, I don't see that as impacting, um, that aspect of, of, you know, for the issue that we have there. Um, so, uh, yeah, I, I, I think it looks good, thank you.
Well, yeah, I think it's good work too, and Brian and Michelle and your work, of course, the devil's often in the details. And I think the details here, the intent is to make it clear for people to work with the city. And, um, and that, that you've accomplished that. And, um, so I, I think it's a step forward, and I think there's some other places where the city is simultaneously making it easier for outside developers, contractors, to understand what we are asking. And, and, uh, so I call it good work, a lot of good work, uh, and you can expect that detail people like Julie are gonna find one or two things, so don't, don't worry about that.
No, 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 just, yeah, that can be really nitpicky, but one other just comment, sorry, I didn't mean to catch your file, but I, I really appreciate you putting in that, um, comment that from the dark skies people about the lights, because I know I've had neighbors that have really irritating, annoying lights, and I don't know why they keep them on all night, all night long, but they do, and, um, it'd be nice to stop that.
You know, I would just add up on the food trucks too, I think the idea to make, uh, opportunities for people to achieve business in a way that doesn't disrupt what we think we want our community to be, and you, you're, you're doing that. And so I, uh, I like that also.
Um, yeah, you guys being, Brian and Meredith, you guys being on the, the, you know, front lines of the, um, building permits and, uh, land use applications and trying to do your best to make things the best as they can. Um, appreciate all the efforts, I think what you're doing is correct. And I think for some folks that might question and say, my God, it's just overwhelming how much there is. You know, you could just take that lazy Susan and spin it the other way and look at trying to plan, developing a piece of land where there are no, where there is no zoning, and it's purely subject to, say, three county commissioners deciding whether they like your project or not, and what you're gonna have to do or not have to do. So the beauty of our city code and the beauty of people like you, um, who are very smart and really diligent in doing it for the best interest of what we're trying to do here is that, you know, it's straightforward. You can look at the code and you can say, I've got this piece of land, I'd like to do X, and how does it fit, and what are the requirements, and how can I budget it, and is this approvable? And if it meets the code, it's approvable, it's not subjective, and then you can move forward. And so having it as clear, um, as possible, so that people know what they can and can't do with their land, is important, and so I'm in favor with, um, everything you guys have been doing, so thank you.
Well, good job, everyone, I'm talking to all of you on the screen there. Thank you very much for a great presentation, answering all our questions. And, um. I think you've heard some, some very sincere compliments about making progress and making this useful to our community, and I feel the same way. I think we're at a point where I need to ask council if you are prepared, if you're ready to call, for me to call for a motion to close the public hearing and no more testimony will be allowed. So let me, um, ask you that question, you comfortable with us?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need that, would someone make a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion carries, public hearing is officially closed. Is there any further discussion council would like to have before I call for a motion?
Not for me.
No.
Okay. Can I make a comment? Sorry, um, so the, the motions are set, um, to suspend the rules first. Um, and then the next one, um, after, when you guys go to adopt, um. The part of the second motion has to approve the summary publication, um, but the summaries weren't quite ready, so, um, the summary will come to the next meeting, so just eliminate, approve the summary for, um, publication, and then we'll just bring them at the next one and they'll go on consent, so that makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, so do we approve the, so, because it says whole public hearing, approve the zoning code amendment, would you do that first?
Did you, oh, you printed.
So I wonder if mine's.
You're looking at another one.
If mine's kind.
Yeah, yours is, yours is correct.
Okay, so let me, so.
You can make the first motion, or no, you don't.
So let me go over this with you, Bessie Jo, and then we'll make sure everyone's tracking this. We've held the public hearing and just closed that. The recommended action is to suspend the rules and read by title only, one time only, ordinance number.
1009.
1009, so we have four people here tonight, we can do that?
Yeah, as long as, if everybody votes yes, then you can go to step three. But if one person votes no, then this will continue to a next meeting.
Okay, so if everyone votes yes on that, uh, recommended action, then we would go to step three, which is adopt ordinance number 1009, approving the zoning code amendment to amend titles three and nine and authorize the publication.
So you'll, you'll cross, you'll cross that part out.
From where do I cross it out?
From authorize.
Okay, excuse me.
To summary, there you go, and then it'll be unauthorized.
So we'd read to amend titles three and nine, comma, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents?
Yep.
And then what would happen next meeting?
But you also have to, in this part, you have to include the, um.
The minor edits.
As amended.
Changes.
Per council member thrower.
If you like, I'm happy to craft the motion for you to where a council member could just say, so moved.
Yes, that'd be great.
That's easier.
We're going to need that help from you and Bessie Jo. Thank you, thanks, everyone.
I ask.
Okay, well, let's, let's work as a team, see if we can get through this. The recommended action is to suspend, uh, the rules and read by title only one time only, ordinance number 1009. Would someone make that motion, please?
I'll move to suspend the rules and read by title only one time only, ordinance 1009.
Second.
All right. Now for these kind of actions, we do a roll call vote. So I will call for a roll call vote on that motion.
Council member thrower? Yes. Council member Machesek?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Council member Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, so that, um, we're, we're good, we have four people that have asked to suspend the rules. And then Bessie Jo, you'll help us with the reading of the, uh, one time only.
Oh, yes.
The title only? Thank you.
Sorry, I've been having some technical difficulties, let me pull that out here.
An ordinance, uh, ordinance number 1009, and ordinance of the city of McCall Valley County, Idaho, amending title three, chapter two definitions, to provide definitions for amended and new terms, amending title three, chapter three, residential zones and standards, clarifying general development standards, modifying permitted administratively approvable, conditional and prohibited uses in residential zones, amending title three, chapter four, commercial zones and standards, clarifying general development standards, modifying permitted administratively approvable, conditional and prohibited uses in commercial zones, amending title three, chapter five, industrial and business park zones and standards, modifying permitted administratively approvable, conditional and prohibited uses in industrial and business park zones, amending title three, chapter six, civic airport and agricultural forest zone clarification regulations for the inclusion of housing in civic zone developments, modifying permitted administratively approvable, conditional and prohibited, prohibited uses in civic airport and agricultural forest zones, amending title three, chapter eight, general development standards, establishing standards for bicycle parking design, clarifying and establishing standards for temporary uses, clarifying fence and wall standards, amending title three, chapter nine, signs, clarifying signage exemptions, amending title three, chapter 13, permits and applications, extending the allowed review time of administrative applications, amending title three, chapter 14, outdoor lighting, to establish standards on outdoor light bulb lighting, color, temperature, amending title three, chapter 16, design review, to require, require design review on certain temporary uses to clarify design standards, amending title nine, chapter one, subdivision and development provisions, clarifying record of survey regulations, amending title nine, chapter six, subdivision and development improvement requirements, eliminating additional parking requirements on developments with private streets, directing the city clerk and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Bessie Jo.
You're welcome.
Okay. Now we're ready to adopt an ordinance, it has some modifications or edits. And, uh, council member Julie Thrower helped us with that. Um, we're talking about ordinance number 1009, approving the zoning code amendment, CA 22-01, to amend titles three and nine with the modifications and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. So this is a very important item that we get straight, and I'm gonna ask Matt to help me with that.
Sure, so would the council like the amendments to be listed again? Are you comfortable with how they've been presented already? Because the clerk can pull them from the record.
Yes, we are comfortable, I think.
Okay, so actually, let's, why don't we do this in two motions? The first motion is to amend the draft ordinance as presented, to incorporate the changes already listed by council member thrower on the record. So by approving this motion, you'll be incorporating those amendments into the draft, we take care of that stuff.
Great.
So.
So moved. Second.
All right, may I have a roll call vote on that motion, please?
Council member Machesek?
Yes.
Council member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Council member thrower? Yes.
Thank you, Matt.
And then your next motion is to adopt ordinance number 1009 as amended, approving the zoning code amendment, CA-22-01, to amend titles three and four, directing the clerk to prepare a summary and authorizing the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
What did you say, three and nine?
I think you said three and four.
Three and, oh, three and nine, I'm sorry, that should have been three and nine, messing up my Roman numerals.
Titles three and nine.
Titles three and nine.
So moved.
Second.
Council member Machesek?
Yes.
Council member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Council member thrower? Yes.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you, council. Uh, those motions carry, and I just wanted to ask, what further work do we need to do to get this to the finish line? There was some kind of other report or something that needs to be brought to us later, you said?
Oh, the summary, he, he included that in the motion, that the, the summary will come to the next meeting, so.
So that. And the consent agenda, nothing else we need to do on that? Other than review the consent agenda.
To be, to be effective, an ordinance has to be published for a really long one. You're allowed to do a summary, but the council technically approves that. The city attorney also certifies it, so it's just a housekeeping step we'll have.
And then we'll be able to get it published within the 30 days.
That's great. Can you understand all of that?
Yep, I understand all of that.
Cool. The mayor is good with that. Okay. I would suggest we take a five-minute break, and then we'll go on to our next item.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Welcome back, everyone. This is Mayor Bob. We are back in session, and we are going to work on our business agenda. The first item up is adoption, approving a resolution to adopt the airport master plan. This is an action item. Bessie Jo will help me with, when we, when we get to that point of what the motion should read. And I thought I would ask Emily to give us a quick, two-minute synopsis on where we're at. I know council was very excited about the plan presented to us at our special session, and we're looking forward to working on approval tonight.
Great. Good evening, mayor, council members. Thank you so much for your thoughtful questions and careful and thorough review of the 2020 McCall Airport Master Plan at last week's special work session. That experience was really value, valuable to me, and I really enjoyed hearing all of your questions and learning more about what your constituents' concerns are. Wayne Rider for T, from TO is also on the call tonight, so if you have any additional questions, we are here to walk through those for you. Does anybody have any questions?
We're all good.
Yep.
We, we were pretty darn thorough and grilled you hard, all of you, last, last meeting. Thank you.
Good. All right, well, in that case, TO engineering and city staff have reviewed the 2022 McCall Airport Master Plan at the May 5th, 2022 special work session, and directed staff to bring the pa, plan back for adoption tonight, May 12th, 2022. Our recommended action is to approve resolution 22 dash 12 for adoption of the 2022 McCall Airport Master Plan and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Well, that's what you have on your agenda bill? So council, my, my paper copy, I, either I lost it or something happened, I don't have it in my binder. Would someone please make that motion that Emily just stated?
Yep.
If you have that on your digital file.
I move we adopt resolution 22 dash 12 for adoption of the 2022 McCall Airport Master Plan and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
All right. Do I need to do the resolution summary first?
Oh, we don't have to redo it now.
We don't have to, okay. All right. So we, a motion has been made and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please, on that motion?
Council, I'm sorry, I missed who.
No, no. My.
Thank you. Council member Nelson?
Yes.
Council member McChesick?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Council member thrower?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution passes. The airport master plan is officially adopted.
Yay!
Emily, you have our permission. Once this go off screen, you may celebrate responsibly. How's that sound?
Thank you very much, and thanks so much to Wayne for being on this long call tonight. He's not appearing on camera, but I really appreciate all his help, as well as Kevin with TO. Have a good night, everybody. Oh, there he is.
Thank you.
Wayne, thank you, and I want to tell you that at our, at our work meeting, I received a lot of comments after the meeting about how good a job you did on presenting that. Thanks for preparing and, and doing a great job, and it really helped us narrow down our questions and feel good about it, so appreciate it.
Thank you, that's great to hear. I'm glad it turned out well for, for everyone.
All righty. Thanks, you guys. So our next item's a, a quick, five-minute item. It's a request to approve submittal of Payette Lakes Progressive Club grant. It's an application to support the library expansion project. That's agenda bill 22 dash 115. Meg, you'll, you'll help us with that?
Yes, good evening, mayor, good evening, council. Meg Lojek, library director. I prepared this agenda bill with Delta James, who would usually present to you, but she's out of town tonight, so I'm happy to take this to your consideration. This is a pretty simple grant request to approve submittal of a grant, application to the progressive club. I love our local progressive club's motto, which you all can appreciate tonight. It is, "No task is too great for those who are truly willing." So their, their mission aligns very nicely with the McCall Library, because they focus on education and youth programs in the area. And so we are seeking to submit a grant application for $5,000 to support the upcoming library expansion project. Specifically, in our grant application, if you approve our submittal, we would focus our application on the children's section of the upcoming library expansion. The Payette Lakes Progressive Club has also supported the library in the past, and most recently with the book bike that you may have seen out and about, and that's been a great partnership with some middle school students, our librarians, and the elementary school, as well as community events in town. So that's been a real successful past history with them. So I'll wait and hear if you have any questions, but otherwise, we're just asking for your approval to submit this grant application. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Any questions for Meg? I think we are all thumbs up, and thanks for your remembering some of the nice things about the progressive club. Wasn't that bike, library thing, the mobile bike stuff, wasn't that one of the things that the city got recognized a year ago for? I believe so. I think we got some recognition.
I believe so, yeah. Yeah.
Anyway, it's really nice to, to see partners step up to do things that are, that are helpful like that. All right, we have a recommended action. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve submittal of a progressive club grant application to support the library expansion project and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Thank you both. A motion has been made and seconded, to approve submittal of a progressive club grant application to support the library expansion project and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Council member thrower?
Yes.
Council member McChesick?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Council member Nelson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, Meg.
Thank you.
Now, stay online, because it's, we're just getting warmed up for some really important stuff, so hang in there with us. All right. We are right on schedule, literally and figuratively. It's eight o'clock. We're going to move into something really important to our community and, and equally important to the council. This is agenda bill 22 dash 120. It's a request to approve the GMP contract award with CM for library expansion project. It's an action item. It's a big deal, and I'm looking forward to a great presentation from Nathan Stewart and his team. A lot of people in the city have worked, city staff, that is, have worked with Meg and others on this, and we are truly looking forward to your presentation. Nathan, thanks.
Okay, good evening, city council. Nathan Stewart, Public Works Director. I've been assigned the project implementation manager for the library expansion project. It's my pleasure to meet with you tonight and to introduce all the hard work we've done over the past 10 months since I've taken on this role. We have tonight a very large team to support this discussion. We have the CM company, Trey Crookson is here online. We also have Dennis Humphries and Paul Lipchek, the lead architects from Ratio. And we also have Zion's Bank representatives here tonight. So we have a, a number of chapters in this discussion. I want to talk to you about the work that we've done to get to this recommended guaranteed maximum price. We also have a funding program that city manager and treasurer have put together, looking at how we're going to fund this project. And then we also have some additional discussion about some additional modifications we'd like to make in light of some information that's come to light since Friday. So I'll start off with giving you kind of the overview, and the document you want to reference is this guaranteed maximum price summary sheet, okay? It's a three-page table, and the cover provides a total breakdown of the project costs. As you're well aware, from some of my correspondence with you and working with the library board, we've had tremendous challenges trying to keep the cost from skyrocketing, and it still has gotten larger. The construction industry is changing since the bond vote, and a number of factors due to the nature of Idaho and how busy Idaho is, how difficult it is to find contractors in McCall, as well as a very fluctuating supply chain that changes almost weekly, has led to a number of things that we've modified, as well as tried to keep this project as well intact to what the original intent and design was that Ratio had presented to this group many years ago. So to back up, starting in July, we became aware of these cost increases, and we came to the council and said, hey, look, we see this happening, we'd like you to kind of approve an additional budget. And as we did that, we moved from a 50% design to a 90% design in McCall. And so as we got more information, CM was then able to go and research the real costs of these specific materials. Lumber prices were skyrocketing, metal prices were going up. So when we got into November, when we had a 90% design, we were in a real difficult situation. We realized that the project was greatly higher than what was originally intended, and yet that was the true reflection of the actual cost to construct this building in 2022 and beyond. So we did a very extensive value engineering effort. So we did a very extensive value engineering effort. CM and Ratio put in a tremendous amount of effort to try to look at ways they could change the design, maybe alter a specific type of material, a type of window. Even, we even identified that if we lowered the roof one foot, we could reduce the cost of an elevator and a number of structural members that brought some of the prices down. We looked everywhere we could go. Unfortunately, everywhere we went, we found out that theoretically, this was reducing cost, but the materials and the labor to do the project were going up just as fast. So we weren't actually reducing the bottom line, the bottom line was going up, we were just bringing what would ultimately be the final price down from the upper atmosphere. So that's, that's been a real struggle, and it's been very frustrating for the team, and I can't thank them enough for dealing with that stress and that challenge, and being honest and respectful to one another through that process. So what you see in front of you here is a reflection of all that work. The first line at the top identifies hard construction costs. There are two components to that. There's a base bid, which includes the site and the building costs of $9,081,908. And then there are a number of bid alternates, and those bid alternates are listed on Pages Two and Pages Three in the columns on the right side of your table. Those bid alternates were bid out with the intent of getting pricing, because these were components of the project that were intended to be included, but we needed to have options, knowing that we might not be able to afford them all. So bidding occurred on March 31st, and unfortunately, despite all of this work, only about 75% of the actual trades that were required for the project, CM received bids. That's a reflection of how busy Idaho contractors are, and how unavailable they are to take on work, even of this size right now. We're competing against so much other construction work in the state. So that's not necessarily going to crush the project. CM then spent the last month pounding the pavement, looking for contractors that would be available to do this work, negotiating bid prices, and securing bids, or at least budgets, that they felt that they could work with to get those trades secured. So by the end of, by the end of April, we were in a position where CM was finalizing their guaranteed maximum price, and we had to look at a variety of these bid alternates that we felt were essential, that were not worth recommending not awarding, even though it did add to the project. So the principal bid alternate is the renovation of the existing library. And it's significant, because the total cost for that bid alternate is $918,000. So the reason this team recommends that is principally because it is essential to the spirit of the project. It involves the community room, it involves renovating a variety of rooms in there, bathroom facilities, office, office space for, for departments, and we honestly felt that that was expected of the council. So in this guaranteed maximum price, we kept that in. The second bid alternate, which is a much smaller cost item, is the overhead door in the makerspace room. That is a small cost item, $10,000, and we have a generous donation from a community member that's providing that funding. So we felt we had to recommend that, because that individual specifically wants that money to go to that portion. The last one that we have recommended is a heating system for the exterior stairs that you'd come up off of Park Street, and it was such a good price, it was just a no-brainer to include it in there. The other bid alternates are things we're not recommending today, but we certainly want to get into this project. This project will start in, in August of 2022, but it won't be completed until August of 2024. And so we have a tremendous amount of time for the foundation to continue to fundraise, for the city to try to find additional funding, and if we can bring some of these components back into the project, that's certainly our goal, because it was, it was in the original concept. But as you can see from this guaranteed maximum price value of $10,011,986, that's much larger than what the bond was passed for and what the original estimate was, was originally proposed for. So that's, that's the basis for our recommended bid alternates. Now, as we go back to the first page, you see we also have the second set of rows, which are design and consultant costs. Those are the fees that we previously established with Ratio to do the design work and to support us through construction. So some of that has already been paid for. In fact, a significant amount of the Ratio work has been paid for. The other fees were testing and inspection for hazardous materials in the existing library to make sure that there weren't any serious materials that would increase the cost of renovation, geotechnical report that was essential for the structural design of the building, and then also a survey to make sure we could get existing topography and elevations correct, so we could do the design. So a lot of those have been already paid for, but they are part of the project costs, and it's very important that you understand the total project budget. The next set of rows are upcoming fees. We have franchise fees for Idaho Power to install a three-phase transformer and bring power into the new site. We have the water capitalization and connection fees. The existing two facilities, the annex and the library, have entitled connections, but the new library will use a lot more water, it's designed for a lot more use, a lot more people, so there are additional water, water fees. And similarly with the sewer district, there are certain credits that were given, but there are also additional capitalization fees because of the larger use. And then the last set of rows is the owner costs on this project. And those owner costs will cover final fixtures and installation of those fixtures, so a security system, all of the audiovisual equipment that's needed for this new library, some cabling and networking, and then builder's risk insurance, which we will cover as the city in the event of a catastrophic event, and then a contingency amount. That contingency amount may seem significant relative to those costs, but that's the entire owner's contingency on a number of different things. The way this contract is written, we can choose to add on to this project if we want. So that's, that money's there to do so. But in similar fashion, as we've seen, when it comes time to buy the chairs and the certain fixtures that we want to put in this facility, we need to be prepared that those costs may change by the time we get there. So that's what that contingency is there for. So the total amount that we have for the project at this point is $11,099,313. So that somewhat concludes the first portion of this. I should add some details about the guaranteed maximum price. If you look at the bottom of Sheet Three, you see the additional costs outside of what some of the hard costs are for CM. There's liability insurance, there's bonding, there's the fee. Originally, when you worked with CM and we decided to select them, they established a fee that was in between, I think it was 4.75 and 7%. We've settled in on a fee of about 5.5%. And given that this is a project that lasts for over two years, which is not what was originally envisioned when that was set up. And then also a contingency for, for CM as well, and we'll talk a little bit about that more later. So all of these fees, all of these prices have been thoroughly vetted. I've challenged the team at multiple levels to try to figure out how we can keep them to the minimum, and I feel very confident that we've done that. I'm not excited that the project is as expensive as it is, but unfortunately, that's a reflection of the world we're living in. Anyone who's built a, a project of this size in this town in the last six months fully recognizes that. So I think it's a good time to stop before we get into the funding program and ask any questions.
I think we're excited to get into that next part.
Okay. So the next portion of, of your packet is this McCall Funding Program. And this is the hard work of your treasurer and city manager. It's one thing to say we've got to spend a bunch of money, it's another thing to go and find it, and there's no better person suited for that than Linda Stokes. So Linda's hopefully on the line as well, and Annette are here, and I would really probably prefer that they present this to you, because they're much more understanding of how we got to where we are. So Annette, would you like to take this, or would you like Linda to?
I'm trying to find that page in the...
It's probably on...
Is it at the end of the contract?
Yeah, it's after the contract.
Sorry, it's not a separate bookmarking. Yes, thanks so much, Nathan, and I can't say enough, like Nathan said at the beginning of his comments enough, about the team that's been working on this. It has been incredibly challenging, and everyone has been very committed to getting this project within a reasonable price and still achieve the vision that the community said they wanted when they voted for the bond measure, and not shortchange any of it. But Meg and her staff and Ratio and CM really did like a super deep dive, and with our building committee and stuff, on every little element involved with this building, to cut out anything that wasn't necessary, reduce types of materials from certain qualities and all of that, to really get it to the most affordable package. So they have done a tremendous amount of work to do this. Anyway, so Linda and I have been keeping an eye on this for a while. As a reminder, we entered into the first contract with CM back in 2019, so we've been at this for a while. And we have been monitoring the construction cost indexes and inflationary factors. CM's been advising us all along what they're seeing in material pricing on other projects. As a side note, they're also the general contractor for the school district, and there was just an article in today's paper about the Donnelly Elementary School expansion and remodel, and that school remodel is $13 million. So I feel like we are in the ballpark, and we're gonna build a brand-new two-story building for less than doing the elementary school. Anyway, so because we knew that these, the market was fluctuating and pretty volatile, Linda and I took a pretty conservative budgeting approach the last couple of years, and had been conscious of how much general fund we could set aside, knowing that we might come to this point where we were gonna need some more resources for the council to consider on how you wanted to fund this. And so we put together, once we had the bid numbers and the GMP earlier this month, or in April, we sat down and looked through everything, especially because our audit was finally done, and now we have the draft final, or the draft numbers for the, the year that closed last September, and we know how much we have in the bank and all of that. We sat down and walked through like every possible place that we could recommend to council to try to close the gap between the resources we have on hand and what we're gonna need by the end of the project. And so that's what the summary sheet is walking you through, and I think, Linda, I would have you walk through the, the top portion, because she's been very diligent with the library board, as Mayor Pob knows, in reporting regularly. Here's how much cash is on hand, here's how many of the bills we've paid, here's where we're at with the library foundation fundraising, and so I could just turn it over to her to explain that, and then we can talk about the ideas we have for the council to, to be able to have the resources for the project.
Do you want me to put that sheet up?
Sure, yeah. We can have Bessie Jo put the sheet up on the screen, Linda, while you're talking.
Yeah, that works, I was gonna share it, but Bessie Jo can do it, that's great. Okay. So the, the first cost is just a summarization of the, the total project costs that Nathan just briefed you all on, less the design and consultant cost paid to date, which is So the amount that we were looking to fund is the, is $10,688,000. So that's, that was our target, that's what we were trying to fund. So I've arranged the funding, the proposed funding into three sections. One is our resources that we have in hand, some potential city appropriations that could be put towards the project, and then some additional other funding sources for consideration. So the resources on hand, so as you all know, we, we sold bonds last August, September, so we have bond proceeds of 4.2 million. Amy at, with, at the library foundation has been doing some fundraising. The last time I received an update from her, they had available in cash and pledges 1.3 million. So I think there's been some additions after Idaho gives, and so this number will be updated as we move through the project. So the library has been doing some, collecting donations for the project, the city has been setting aside some 300, about $300,000 for the last few years towards this project. So the sum total of remaining city funds that we have on hand through those different funding sources, including some LOT monies that has been given to the library for the project, and some, and some grants as well, is 1.2 million that's available. And then, as Nathan mentioned, we do have some, some utilities that franchise fees can be used to help cover for the electricity and the sidewalk frontage. So money's coming from streets LOT for the frontage on Park Street, and then franchise fees for the undergrounding of the onsite electric, electrical. So that's a total funding resources on hand in the bank of 6.9 million to go towards the project. So Annette, were you wanting to walk the council through the city appropriations, there's some, some sections?
Sure, sure. Okay. Okay, so as you know, we're entering into the budgeting process for fiscal year '23 here shortly, and so a portion of that process is determining how much of the city's general fund, you know, the unrestricted dollars that we have available, the council wants to appropriate for capital improvement projects. And so obviously, my first recommendation to you is that we take what we can and allocate it to the library capital improvement project to make sure this project can be executed. And then we'll be recommending setting aside $500,000 for other critical capital improvement projects and other departments, but that the majority of that resource would be dedicated to this project over the next two years to ensure it can be done. So that's a choice you'll be making in the budget process. You don't need to make any of these choices tonight, I'm just laying out, there's all these options for you that we'll be bringing forward. The second one, and then a smaller amount, the library fund is accounted for independent of the general fund, and so each year when they have unexpended dollars, it remains in the fund, and right now, they have about $145,000 that we could reallocate towards the capital project instead of operations without impacting their, their operations. And then, under Idaho's property tax law, and so for, we'll get into more explanation of what foregone is and how the council can use it in the budget process, we have a whole segment we do on that, so this is kind of jumping ahead a little bit, but the council does have the ability to tap into your levy authority that you didn't use in the past. It's basically one way to describe it. So there were times in the past when the city didn't maximize their property tax levy, and you sort of get credit for that, and the law allows in the future for you to go back and tap into that for specific purposes, and this would be an eligible purpose.
and this would be an eligible purpose for the council to do that. And under the tax formulas set by the state, Linda's calculated what that amount could be if that was an option you wanted to exercise towards this project. And that's the four hundred and twelve thousand you see there. So that would be an action you would take during the budget process this year. And so with that combination of funds, that's approximately two point six million dollars that could be dedicated to the project. And then listed below in that third category are outside funding sources. So you recently approved Delta to submit a Laura Moore Cunningham grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're waiting to hear if we get that. The Library Foundation has committed to raising five hundred thousand more. My understanding is they're almost halfway there. So there's that. And then that last line item, that's the coronavirus relief funds that I came and talked to about previously that has flexibility to be used for all kinds of things. And we had elected the most flexible category back in April, and so we could, in this scenario I'm putting down here, okay, we could use half of that money towards this project, it would be an eligible use, and reserve the other half for other types of things. And by doing all of these things, we can cover the cost of the project. So, does that help?
That's awesome. Really good work on everyone's part to put all that together. And like you said, you're going to be going over all the details of this as we proceed into budgeting in June and July.
So I think what we're trying to lay out for you is some level of comfort of being able to fund this project, so that if you were feeling comfortable with that tonight, knowing that we have these additional choices to make and could mix and match things in the budget process, then if you were comfortable with moving forward with the project tonight, we would be able to, you know, turn CM loose to get going. But certainly we'll answer any questions about the financing proposal here. And as Nathan mentioned in the beginning, we do have a representative of our financial advisors, Zion's Bank on the line, who is prepared to talk to you about implications for the bond if there was a delay or we decided not to do the project because we've already sold those bonds. He could also speak to you about external borrowing options if you aren't comfortable about using all internal resources. And his name is Michael Keith, and I can see he turned on his camera. So before we go to him, do you have any questions for Linda or I about the financial side?
No, I think that for me, I have no questions. I think that well lays out the options. Some of them are more preferable than others, and when we hear more, we could, and the budget process comes, you know, there are some means to, we'll have a little better idea. My point in particular was the foregone might not be that popular, and the time when that comes about, we might know how much we need in that or don't need, and what other sources there might be. Just my perspective.
Your thoughts, Mike? Any questions on this, the presentation so far? Julie? Wow, good, I'm good.
Okay, good.
Did we want Mike to say, Michael to say anything from Zion's at all?
So, sure, but before we go to that, I don't think council wants to ask the question, what do we do if we don't proceed with the project, because we want to proceed with the project. So I don't think we need that question answered, but we would love to hear from Zion's. Michael, weren't we lucky to get such a low interest rate?
Absolutely. If there is any silver lining in all of this that rates are going up, it's at least that you're going to earn more on the funds that are sitting there being idle right now. So that is something that is going to benefit, you know, the city as we kind of start thinking about, well, what are these additional, you know, resources that are available? And it's not insignificant of an increase in interest rates that you're going to start seeing on those funds. So, yes, it's good that you guys locked in when you did, and now you're going to benefit from those funds sitting there with rates going up on that. So I guess if the council's okay, I mean, it kind of sounds like, I'm happy to hear that, you know, that the council's committed, you know, to this project, because, you know, certainly with some of the funds that I'm going to talk about that's already been committed, I think it makes it a little challenging to completely walk away from this project. And part of what I wanted to be able to present to the council this evening was just kind of a reminder, hey, you know, what is the contract, you know, with the bonds? You know, we kind of have two, right? There's the what we told the voters, right, when we got the funds. So that's the contract one, which you guys are very aware of. And then there's the contract number two, when we sold the bonds, and kind of what that means, you know, for the investors. And so I, you know, I have a very short presentation, I kind of wanted to walk through that just a little bit, just so the council kind of has kind of a grounding on what it means on this four point two million that you have borrowed already to commit to this, this project, and then certainly stand for any questions if there are any from the council.
I think that would be great. We wouldn't be doing our responsible responsibilities redeeming that properly if we didn't. So please proceed, that sounded like a great briefing.
Okay, perfect. Let me see if I can, do I have share screen capabilities? Looks like I do. Can everybody see that okay?
We can, yep.
Okay, perfect. So I think one thing that I wanted to update you on, people were probably fairly familiar with Christian Anderson, that helped you guys with the bond and was sitting in my chair that I am today. I was actually sitting on the other side for Piper Sandler when you guys sold the bonds, but then when Christian left, Christian had come to me to kind of take over his position at Times Bank, so I'm excited to be before you guys now in a new position and kind of talking about the bonds and kind of what got sold for the city. So just, you know, briefly, again, we talked this upfront that, you know, the city went for an election, right? An election that describes in that bond election what you can do with that four point two million dollars, which is committed for the library project that you guys have been speaking about. That was four point two million that we sold, that was a term of twenty years. And of course, the other thing that that provided the city was an additional source of repayment, right, to pay the debt. You know, it allows you guys to go out and certify a levy, and the city has done that, and it's made its first interest payment at the beginning of this year on those bonds. So that's been set in motion in terms of what you can do with the funds. The other part that's been set in motion already, because we sold bonds last fall, is the second part that I talked about, which is this contract now effectively with investors. What does that look like, right? So we went out and we borrowed money. You know, typically, if you borrow from a bank, right, there's, you know, you can just pay the money back. Like you say, hey, you know what, I decided not to do the project, yeah, I've got some interest costs, but I just want to give the rest of the proceeds back to the bank, we'll cover any additional costs, and we'll just cancel the loan. It's not how investments work in the marketplace, it's not quite that simple. Because when we go to issue bonds in the marketplace, because they're an investment, because investors are looking to have that investment for a certain period of time, investors ask for what we term in our marketplace call protection, meaning that for a certain period of time, those bonds have to remain outstanding irregardless. And so typically, the standard for that is ten years. And some of the other things that also go with this are, we call them IRS requirements, but really, there's no penalty, specifically, we don't meet them, but that when we issue tax exempt debt, which is what the city issued, that the IRS says, okay, look, if you're going to issue these funds and we're going to provide investors tax exemption for that, we want to know that there is a project, these funds are going to be, you know, spent in a reasonable amount of time, and you're not just borrowing more than you need, sitting on those funds and earning what we call arbitrage in our market, meaning that I've borrowed at these low rates, and now I'm going to go invest at higher rates. And so they put lots of rules around taxes of bonds. One of those are some reasonable expectations for spending the funds. Typically, you have to have committed or spent ten percent in the first six months, which, you know, you haven't spent specific bond proceeds, but there has been some cost spent on the project, so you're okay there. The other part of this is a reasonable expectation that eighty-five percent of those proceeds be spent, and I should actually say in three years. Now, what happens if you don't? Well, it's not like the IRS is going to come back and fine you, but they are going to request that you yield restrict the funds. And really what that means is that when we issued the bonds for the city last fall, there's a calculation that's put on these that we call the bond yield or the arbitrage yield for the bonds. What that becomes is any funds associated with that that were issued, the earnings on those get capped, and that becomes important now because we're seeing interest rates go up, right? And so there will eventually be a cap on those earnings that we'll work with the city on to make sure that we pay attention to. If you can meet these tests along the way in terms of spending funds, then you get to disregard that altogether, and whatever earnings you earn, you earn. But if you don't, then you do have to be concerned with those proceeds, and you have to actually yield restrict the funds. Or if you earn more than what the IRS says you're allowed to earn on those bonds, you have to rebate it back. So again, that's something, well, it's again, not a penalty, but something we want to keep track of, because you don't want to get to the end of the project and have spent four point two plus all the interest earnings, and then find out from the IRS that you have to send them a check for, you know, some sum of money, whether it's fifty thousand or sixty thousand dollars. And so we've kind of had some discussions with, you know, city staff about this, and that's something we'll kind of keep our eye on as we kind of move through this bond process. On the next slide, I just kind of wanted to go through a little bit more of the details of the bond, and more specifically, that call provision that I talked about. You know, we sold the bonds, you know, last September eighth, closed, which is when you receive the funds on the twenty-first. We are already in repayment process, like suggested on those loans, we made our first payment in March, which is an interest payment, so you have interest payments twice a year, March first and September first. And then you have annual principal beginning September one, twenty twenty-two, so you'll make your first principal payment on those funds, you know, this fall. Their general obligation, which means, again, that you get to levy a tax to repay those, we talked about the tax exempt and the twenty years, but the call date is kind of the key here. So on these bonds, they cannot be called away from investors until September first, twenty thirty-one. So that doesn't mean you can't take proceeds, set them aside in an escrow account, but what it does mean is interest cost effectively has to be paid to the investors for that first ten years, and you would have to set enough funds aside in that escrow account to satisfy those first ten years of interest payments due to the investors before the bonds can be, what we call in our marketplace, legally defeasted or paid off on that. So this kind of talks a little bit more about some other options for funding the gap, but if you decided to call the bonds, say, hey, like, we're walking away from this project, which means, you know, you have to pay the bonds off immediately. Effectively, that would mean that the city would have to come up with that initial nine hundred and fifty thousand to pay that interest cost over the next, you know, ten years. And so that would just be funds that would need to come out of existing city resources along with the funds that are still sitting there to pay back the bonds on that. So there's effectively a penalty. You can get out of it, but it's going to cost you, you know, to unwind the bond, so to speak, since they've already been issued. So it's not a good option, it's not an option I certainly would recommend, but it is an option that's on the table for the city. The second one is what you've already talked about, right? What other resources do we have in terms of reserves, fundraising, and interest earnings, right? So those funds are going to earn money. Under IRS rules, they have to be considered proceeds of the bonds in the project anyways, so those interest earnings on that four point two million can't be spent anywhere else but the project. So as we start to see interest rates again rise, and those investment rates rise, even if it's sitting in the state pool, those rates will continue to go up, and you will earn money. And with rates going up as much as they are with four point two million, it's not insignificant amount of money that you might earn to help fund a little bit of the gap that we're talking about. So again, like I said early on, that is a little bit of a silver lining right now with interest rates going up for the city. This third thing, which is obviously not a popular option either, but other, you know, other entities, much like yourself, that had been in this situation, have had to do this, which is going back to the voters and having a second bond, right? So if this becomes so expensive and you still want to complete the project, you can go back to, obviously, the voters and ask for additional authorization to fund the gap, so to speak, on the bonds. And of course, those election dates, as I'm sure you're aware, are in May or November of each year that you can run a bond election. The other thing you could do, but it's still leveraging, you know, resources, right? You could do short-term tax anticipation notes if you wanted to try to bring forward some tax revenues in the future and try to fund that today. COP is a possibility. I think there's some, the recent legal challenges you'd have to work through. COP means certificate of participation, which is really, you're doing kind of a more of a lease financing for the remaining portion of the project. It's a way to, again, finance it through an annual appropriation lease, but it's not necessarily a great option, and there would be some legal things to kind of work through on that if that's, I think that's kind of a last, kind of a last resort type financing if it's needed, but could be considered. And of course, the other one, which is what you guys have already done and you've talked about, which is the obvious option, which is, you know, if we just, we can't get there, we don't.